Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the second of two budget meetings for the Bennington -- Town of Bennington. This is Saturday, January 13th. We are in the fire facility on River Street, third floor, and we are, again, happy to see so many of you getting up bright and early to come to the meeting. That's quite wonderful. We're going to start this morning just by amending the agenda. The Bennington County Regional Commission is going to meet with us on the 22nd, which is our regular Select Board meeting, rather than today. They are not asking for an increase, but they will give us an update at that time about last year's activities and next year's activities. Could I have a motion to, I guess--
amend the agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
I move that we adjust the agenda to accommodate BCRZ.
Thank you. Great. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and now we'll back up a little bit, and I'll start by saying my name is Jeannie Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Good morning, Sarah Perrin.
Good morning, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Jean Conner.
Morning, I'm Ed Woods.
Great, thank you all. And also with us today, we have Assistant Town Manager Dan Monks. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every single meeting, and we have Jim Viers, who is very dedicated to making sure that the public gets to see all these meetings through CAT TV. So this is not live, but it will be up later.
It will be up this afternoon.
It will be up this afternoon, because they are on it. That is really great. And also, we want to thank the local for providing Select Board members with some refreshments this morning and also last Saturday morning. So thank you very much. All right, so let's move right into the agenda. I see Lynn is already ready. So with that, Bennington Free Library is the first organization on the agenda today. So Lynn, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Do you have the mic, or can--
I think you're going to need to bring it down a little bit maybe. Ooh, yeah.
Good morning. Thank you, Select Board, for inviting me to come and talk about our request for the library's fiscal year '25 budget. My name is Lynn Fonten McCann, and I'm the Director of the Bennington Free Library. I wanted to just start by talking a few of the highlights. I've passed out a rather smaller packet for you this week or this year. You won't be tested on it. We had some new programs. We had some very successful new programs. Chess programs and instruction, ongoing deliveries to daycare centers. Wall works resumed after three-year hiatus from the COVID. So we're able to feature local artists in the library, and we have a little reception, which is nice, and just as a way for people who might be uncomfortable going to a museum or an art gallery are exposed to fine art and get to see what some of our local artists are creating. We did an Earth Day craft swap, which was really popular, and almost everything went. And that, you know, will be something that will continue every year. Basically, people just bring things in, they clean out their closets, it's all free. So it's a nice way to recycle. I'll be doing a bit of that myself this year. Know Your History program with Carson, and it was a collaboration with the Bennington Museum. It was a four-part series. CAT TV filmed it, and it's still available, I believe, and it was just instructional, really, so the residents could find out ways to research the history of their homes if they like, or other buildings in the community. We created a Memory in Foreign Language collection, which I believe Wendy spoke to you about before. That was all grant-funded. And last summer, at the end of the summer, we had a street dance, which Bennington used to have them, and we had Boogie Down at the library, and over 100 people showed up on what was probably the hottest day of the summer. We were able to use new equipment that was provided through ARPA grants. We have a nice sound system now, and we have a DJ on staff, so he was our resident DJ. Our circulation numbers are up, and we think that they're achieved and have surpassed somewhat pre-COVID levels. I should, there's, might be, in my mission, or in my report to the town, I did say that we circulated close to 46,000 items. That's actual physical books and non-conventional items like telescope and--
Snowshoes.
Snowshoes, thank you. But our actual checkouts, if you include our electronic, were closer to 71,000 items. Let's see. I mentioned deliveries to seniors. A big thing is that we are pursuing a grant, and we're led to believe that we will be probably looked upon very favorably to completely revamp our HVAC system for the entire library. We're going to ask for a million dollars. These are ARPA funds. And also, we expect to have some support from Energy Efficiency Vermont and Green Mountain Power, as well as whatever we can provide from our own finances to fund this effort. It's a big one, but the systems have, I mean, we've got three different buildings, basically, that have been cobbled together, and they've never played well together. And a few years ago, we spent $30,000 or so to upgrade it, and it's still not right. So we really need to have something that's very efficient. We'll do heat pumps, and something that integrates the entire building. And also, we want to set it up so that we can monitor it electronically, so remotely. If we decide to close for the day, then someone can log in and turn the heat down, rather than have it run throughout the day. I guess that's it. Are there any questions about programming and so on and so forth at the library?
Are you wanting just questions on programming, or general questions?
Well, I'll get to the, you could do general questions, but then we'll move on to the budget.
Okay, okay. Programming questions, Select Board?
Or operations at the library?
No. Anyone in the public have questions? All right, go ahead.
Sorry. What are your aspirations for 2025 as far as programming? This is, you know, what you obviously accomplished this past year, so I guess I'm just curious what next year is going to look like as far as programming, or if you even know.
I can't say that I know, because I'm retiring--
That's right, I forgot.
[laughing] Then we'll kind of be, you know, the next director will be driving that, as well as the board and the staff. But I'm sure, you know, we'll continue this. We're always looking for new ideas, and welcome ideas from the community, as kind of program that they'd like to see happen at the library.
Can I ask, do you have a time of year when you do goal-setting as a library board?
That's pretty much throughout the year. I mean, we don't have a formal goal-setting meeting, but we're, you know, we talk about it in board meetings throughout the year.
Okay. All right, so, yes, please, continue.
So any questions about, I broke it up into the last year, the current, you know, the fiscal year '23 last year, so that you could see what we budgeted and what we spent. And then, just because it's easier than going through multiple columns and me explaining, are there any questions about the fiscal year '23 budget?
The '24 budget?
Uh, no.
'24 is 2023.
Twenty, yeah.
'25. Fiscal year '25 is 2024.
Well, we're currently in '24, but just last year's budget.
Right. So the FY '24 budget is what we're looking at, and then the actuals, which are six months into it, is that--
Right.
--what we're looking at? I have a question, and I, so, well, it's more about the FY '25 proposed budget. It seems that, when I look at what you've been able to bring in, particularly in terms of grants and gifts, it is, in general, with the exception of the adult grant, far, far, far below what you budgeted. And I see that in 20, for FY '25, you've increased your goals, but you haven't really talked about why, if you didn't meet your goals when they were lower, why you are going to be successful meeting your goals when you've increased them.
Well, the fiscal year '24, which is the current year that we're in, a lot of times the grants and the gifting and so on, it comes through later. This is just to the end of October, so it's still fairly early in our year.
Yeah, but I'm looking, I mean, just looking at the top, gifts, adult, gifts to the adult department are a little less than $300, and you budgeted $5,000. And in some cases, I mean, like, grants for adult, you exceeded this year, so that goal seems very good.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm just looking down, and it, like, what are you doing differently this coming year that might increase the number of, the amount of money that's going to come in? Because it looks to me like you're just making the budget work, as opposed to having a strategy for expanding it. And I don't know if there's someone else that, you know, should speak to that, rather than you, since, you know--
Well, we, you know, last year, we made $12,000 over our budget in terms of gift, adult gifts, and we have some people that regularly give to us later in the year. So, I mean, that's, that's why that was increased by that much. Not to 15,000, or even 10,000, but we felt that 5,000 was a reasonable amount to anticipate for the year for gifts.
Okay.
And in term, you know, and the grants, you know, money just, I can't say pours in, but, you know, we do anticipate some more funding from the, from the library through ARPA and other grants that are available.
So maybe, I know every year we ask you to do something different with the budget, but I'm just wondering if it makes sense to have one more column that shows, like, end of the, you know, a full year's income coming in, because then it's very hard, it's very hard to look at a half a year, and it's, and it's, it doesn't give us much.
Right. Well, that's why I gave you the fiscal year '23 printout, which shows you, you should have gotten that in your packet. I gave you Bennington Free Library fiscal year '23, which is our budget in our actual, okay?
Do you have it?
No.
I don't have it. We don't have it.
Well, that was in the packet that I sent you. So, and then I gave you the fiscal year '25, which has this half, half a year. So you should have gotten two spreadsheets with explanations.
We did not.
Lynn, we didn't get anything from it.
Okay.
So what we got was in the packet--
Was just this year?
Right.
With fiscal year '25 and--
'24 and '25.
'24, '25, okay.
So we don't have '23. So '23 would be helpful. Thank you.
'23, Stuart has it, I can forward it to you as well.
Okay.
But that just shows you, you know, what we had, what the actuals were for the year.
Yeah.
And to address Jeannie's question, I'm assuming if we had seen that, it would have aligned much more closely with your--
With what I'm asking for this year, yes. For example, last year in grants, this is last fiscal year, this is the sheet that you didn't get, we had budgeted for $1,000 for grants. This year, we're budgeting for 5,000. Actually, we budgeted for--
Actually, you budgeted 5,000 this--
For this coming year. 2,000 last year. But in '23, we received $11,000 in grants, which was 10,000 over our budget.
So that's really helpful. So maybe next year, it's just all in one sheet.
Okay.
So we don't have to worry about--
Actually, I did that the year before, and it was just so confusing that I thought this would be easier for you to see, so--
Well, we--
Whatever.
We appreciate the effort, I'm sorry.
And we're really used to looking at--
All of them, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that answers that question. Thank you.
All right. So in terms of the, this year's budget, and our appropriation request for this year, we're asking the town for 3.5%, which is cost of living, and that chiefly is personnel costs, which are up 3.68. Overall, our budget is up 3.6%. I've increased income from interest, endowment slightly. Endowment's up 10%. Our interest income, hopefully, is up quite a bit, 150%. Grants, gifts, those are all up, because we anticipate that, that we're going to continue to enjoy the generosity of our donors. Let's see, grants, those are showing very low numbers in what we've got to date, but those typically, as I said earlier, come through later in the year.
Got it.
And of course, if we get the big grant, which we're still waiting on, we had anticipated that, or we're told that it would be available in '22, and then it was just, you know, January '23, March '23, Feb, excuse me, September '23, then December '23, and now it's January '24. We're still waiting to hear, but there, the Vermont Library, Department of Libraries is waiting to hear back from the federal government to, for them to approve what they're doing with those funds.
Okay.
And there will be, there are $10,000, $10 million available to small and regional libraries, which we are not, but there's $16.4 million that will be available to our library, or to libraries of our size, or through all libraries, really, throughout the state. And as I said, we have a reasonable expectation that the state will fund us quite well for this project.
Is there a backup plan, or is that just--
If the backup plan is to continue as we've been doing, which is really, it's good money after bad, but--
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. So are you, are you, are you asking for general questions now, or you have other things--
Sure.
--that you want to go over?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're doing pretty well under the circumstances. As I said, the salaries really are the chief driving force for the increase. I increased the copier computer a little bit, because last year, we were able to use ARPA funds for some of our computer purchases, but the 19,000 really is more in keeping with what it costs us on a, on a yearly basis. And we have a five-year rotation plan for our computers, because they're heavily, heavily used at the library. And five years is really, they're outside of their useful life, so we try to replace those on a regular basis. Insurance, the building went up a little bit, because one of our board members used to work at the insurance company, and he kind of forgave his percentage, and now he isn't, so they went up a little bit. And of course, everything always goes up. Professional development, that is, that's 1%. We increase it 1% every year, or 10%, I guess. And professional fees, of course, those are always going up. Telephone, we, this year, we learned that we will not be, the state right now is currently subsidizing our fiber, and they're no longer going to do that, because they discovered that there were a lot of expenses that they weren't being charged for, that were discovered, and they will be charged for them in the future. So they're handing that off to the individual libraries that are all part of the Fiber Connect Network. But they're also giving us $20,000 to replace our equipment, which is 10, 10 years old. So we're consulting with Ron Haasler to come in and replace all of our switches and our routers. The wiring is fine, the computers aren't part of that, and hopefully upgrade our phone system also at this point, which is 10 years old. So that'll be--
So what's, what's the, sorry, I don't know what--
It's not included in this budget, because at that point, you know, we really, it's, it'll be a grant, grant-funded, and it won't be. And we didn't have that information in time to prepare it for here.
But starting this--
Starting the next--
In 2024?
Yes, in '25, next year.
Yeah.
We will be on our own in terms of the fiber. But we're working right now to get some estimates from different companies, because it's not only fiber. We will switch to voiceover fiber for some of our phones, but we still have to have a dedicated line for our elevator, for example, and that's not cheap. So we're getting, you know, we'll be as cost-conscious as we can. The, you know, we're in a good position, because the state is going to subsidize the purchase of new equipment, which is really pretty outdated at this point, and move forward.
Other questions? Yes?
Let's see. On line 31, it says income from other sources.
Yes. What is that?
Yeah, what are they?
Jeannie, as well, I think the good illustration is fiscal year '23. What you don't have is that a lot of times, our budget is actually exceeded. For example, we make more money on our fundraising. Last year was $15,000. Over the years, you know, those, those figures kind of accumulate, and that's, those are the funds that we use to kind of subsidize any work that has to be done on the library building that we hadn't anticipated, and that's where that is. That's in our operating fund at this point, so we'll just use that to balance the budget, rather than ask for more funds from the towns.
Okay, thank you. And my only other question so far is, under the endowment income, you've projected an additional $3,000 for fiscal year '25. I know no one has a crystal ball, but does, do you have anyone look at the investments in the endowment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And actually, recently, we took some of our funds and put them into CDs to kind of increase our interest, that's interest, but the endowment is managed. We have funds with Vermont Community Foundation, and we also have funds at a local bank that manages our funds for us.
So the additional $3,000, did it come from your, the financial planner who managed the endowment?
It came from what we made last year in our endowment.
Okay.
It was based on that.
Let's hope it's better this year than it was last year, because I don't know about you, but we were going in the wrong direction.
You know, it's, it's like Johnny Carson, you know, it's just, some of you are too young to know that reference, but, you know, it's, these are guidelines, you know, and we do the best we can in terms of coming up with a budget, and generally, we do okay. The point is, is to not end up at the end of the year in the hole.
Yeah.
And we've managed to do that quite well, I think.
And I'm just glad to hear you have someone looking at the endowment, the investments.
Yes, we do. I mean, we have, the trustees are the financial committee for the library, and they meet semi-regularly to discuss that.
Okay. That's it.
So I have just a small question, first time looking at this, as you know. I noticed that Shasberry and Woodford have not yet contributed against their commitment to this year.
They commit, actually, Shasberry just came in.
Okay.
And Woodford comes later in the year.
Okay, so there's no, they're not in any danger?
No, we'll get some funding from them. And while you're, while you mention Shasberry, I think I explained why we're level funding our ass with Shasberry this year. You know, I didn't get the packet, as I usually do. I got in touch with them, and they said, oh, we sent them, la, 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 la. There really wasn't enough time for us to mount a fundraising, you know, petition to increase our ass this year, which is what they were requiring. And next year, I understand that they're going to put it in the general fund, as Bennington does, so that, you know, basically, the select folks will decide how much we get, as you do for us as well.
Okay. Great. Other questions? So, Board, what is your pleasure? So the library is asking, last year, it was 500,012,940, and this year, they're asking for 538,93, which is a 3% increase. Do we want to make, are we comfortable going further with this now, or do you want to hold it until we've heard from other, other organizations that are speaking this morning? If you're comfortable, then I'd look for a motion. If you're not, then we won't.
Motion to accept the budget for this whole year, 2024.
25. 25.
For the Bennington Free Library. Do I have a second?
Second for the point of discussion.
All right. Discussion.
Can we still request, in this view, although it won't hold us up today, the 2023 view?
Oh, sure, I'll send that.
Yeah, if you just send it to--
I'll send it to you, Jeannie.
Send it to me, and I can send it out.
Thank you.
That's great. Yes. All right. Any other discussion?
Yes, to be clear, this puts it on the ballot.
It puts it in the--
In the budget.
In the budget.
It's like every--
We're in the general fund.
In the general fund, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it would become part of--
Part of--
--the general fund that we--
Yeah, I think in the '80s, the Select Board decided to put it in the general fund, because if, for some reason, it got voted, or it wasn't approved, then there would be no library.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, thank you very much, Lynn.
Thank you.
And thank you, board members and interested participants. Thank you.
Lynn, congratulations on your upcoming retirement.
Thank you, and I found a good picture for you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the John G. McCullough Library.
They're not, you know, they're not going to be on the budget line, so they're not there. Jeannie's going to talk about some other ones, but they are submitted information to everyone. There's going to be some discussion.
It's an advantage of not having a beer.
Jeannie, are their materials, yeah, their materials are coming down to us?
Yes, yeah. There are enough copies of the color service snapshot, I think, for everybody. There's one copy of our strategic plan, our three-year plan, that was approved in June. And there's also an extra copy of the budget, just in case you don't have one in front of you.
No, we have the budget.
Okay.
So did we leave the strategic plan with Nancy?
No, it's coming your way.
Oh, I'm just--
This is the snapshot that we copied up. I'm just going to balance it this, and then Nancy.
Okay.
There are also, the strategic plan is available on the library's website as well.
Okay. I think it's helpful, it's helpful for us to get as many materials as we can ahead of time, because--
Yeah.
--we're really bad at reading and listening at this, you know, like, you don't want us to do that.
Okay.
So, okay, but hopefully, you're going to walk us through it, so that will help. Okay, are we ready to move forward? All right, Jeannie, please introduce yourself and welcome.
Well, good morning. I'm Jeannie Rozicki. I'm the Director of the John G. McCullough Free Library in North Bennington, and we have had an amazing year. So I'm just pleased to, to share that pretty much every benchmark that we track, we've more than exceeded our expectations this year. People are borrowing items, they're stopping in to use our new meeting room, they're bringing their kids to the library, just they're, they're using our resources and the building and our services. And it's been so, I guess, heartwarming and quite a relief. When we reopened the building in December of last year, I was like, oh, gosh, are they going to come back? And they really, really did. So I'm, I'm very pleased with what we've been able to accomplish this year and the service we've been able to provide. Let's see. So what do you want to know about first? That's kind of, I, you know, it's been, it's been a very good year. We've been able to deliver quite a bit. Do you want to know about our plans for the year ahead?
Well, I think, I think we want to hear what you have proposed for next year, and also--
Certainly.
You're asking for a 13% increase, so--
We are.
So, you know, what, what figures into that?
Absolutely. So what is part of this is, we have level funded for the last few years, and if you draw out our requests over the last five, it's been $1,000 per year over the last five. Part of this is also trying to figure out, you know, when you're budgeting, you're like, what do we need? What can we do to meet those needs? And what do we need to balance it out? Which resources can we put toward fundraising? What assets do we have that we can put toward fundraising? So it's, yeah, that's kind of where we are with that. We've, I think we've kept our own fundraising obligations level, just because we did have a bit of trouble meeting our annual fund, fundraising. We, our goal was 46. We're falling just short of that, so we're like, okay, is that the level of fundraising that is doable for our community? Is that still a legitimate goal for our annual fund? But we do have planned a return to our gala dinners that should happen this spring-- But we do have planned a return to our gala dinners that should happen this spring, which is a fundraiser. And our fundraiser auction, which happened in the fall of 2023, did remarkably well, much better than a book sale would have in terms of fundraising. So, we still have, we have a bit of a cushion there that we can employ toward, but it's always, do we want to use Friends fundraising for essential operations? You know, books, you know, it's that sort of thing. Should it pay the electricity bill? So, that's, that's kind of where we are with that. But, yeah, we do have some resources that we can put toward our operations funding this year.
And so, the major, the, so the request for an increase is because of a shortfall? Or is it because of just the cost that you assume you'll need for increased salaries?
Yeah. The cost, I mean, just, I'm sure you've seen what happens with office supplies, or utilities, or cost of living increases, you know, raises for staff. It, the cost of everything has gone up, and our, our funding requests have remained level these past few years. So, now that we have reopened, we have a better sense of what is needed year to year. The other part in there, some of the variances you'll see, are we had increased programming costs this year. And it was, I think, in, as an, as an effect of the pandemic, people are coming back together. They're trying to re-sharpen or develop those social, social skills and coming together, and they miss people. And we've been sort of responding to needs and, and, you know, desires in the community for events to come together, opportunities to see one another. One of the big increases in the expense was for our summer reading program for young people, which provides incentives for reading over the summer and opportunities for young people and families and caregivers to get together. That was funded primarily through a grant, through the Fund for North Bennington. They were our lead sponsor on that. And when we go into programming, planning, there's always the, so how are we going to pay for this? It's part of our planning for programming. But I'm very pleased with the results of that investment in our young people. Our Youth Services Librarian did a tremendous job, and we had 126 young people who participated in that program, and together, they read for 111,550 minutes, which I think puts it in some of the, like, the top-ranked libraries in the state, which was just huge. And we had over 800 people attending a series of 10 programs over the summer. So, that was increased cost, but it definitely paid off, and it helps our young folks keep their, keep their reading skills sharp while they're not in school. So.
Congratulations, that's great. Questions?
Can I just ask sort of a format question? There's no 25 on here, so I'm assuming that 24, that what's labeled 24 is really 25?
Yes. The, the final column on the right is.
So, 2024 is FY25.
Yeah.
It's, it's that thing that plays with our head. Yeah. So, FY25 really is the 2024 budget.
Thank you. And so, we're comparing to 23 and 24. Are we a year, are we a year off in each column?
No, we aren't, no. So, so FY24 was 2023, FY25 is 2024.
So, is she budgeting calendar, and we're budgeting fiscal?
So, people, yes, we have people budgeting September to August.
Oh.
January to December.
Even though we don't live in that one.
And July to June.
Gotcha.
And so, yeah.
So, so in your mind, in the past, you've made this fit into the fiscal for the town?
We just, yeah, we, we work off of whatever calendar they work off of, because asking everyone to switch to the town's calendar, which fiscal calendar would be, I mean, I think for some large organizations, I think actually, the Rescue Squad did make that switch, because it was just impossible to look at their budget.
Yep.
And do it. But for others, we don't. And that's the same for the agencies that are on the ballot.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
It's been doing it eight in the morning.
I'll make a note here that we can label this a little differently for external use and then internal use, so we're all speaking the same language.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's going to be, I mean, for some people, it's their whole budget, for some people, it's a half-year budget, but once you get rolling, it's, you know, it, it doesn't really matter. It means that half slops into the next year, half. Very good question. Yeah, the first couple of times around, you're like, wait, what am I looking at? So, so it looks like, so it looks like the major expenses, am I reading this right? The major expenses really are not salary and wages, which have stayed stable this year. It really happens to be, it really is supplies and program, increase in program costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, and some of the features that we're hoping to add this year, building on our success with digital resources, which has become increasingly central to what we do, which is interesting for a small building. It means we can provide access to a lot of stuff for being a small organization. So, we're hoping to bring on Xenio, which is unlimited access to over 3,000 online magazines, including all the biggies. Like, if you have a favorite magazine, it's likely in there. If you have an extremely niche interest, it's probably in there. So, that's, you know, that's an increase in subscriptions there.
Is that the, is that the increase in periodicals?
Yeah, that's, yeah, so that's.
That's reflected in.
Yeah, so.
In the periodicals, okay.
Subscriptions. We're also looking at software to streamline our event promotion, sort of for our website. There's a software that does, gosh, it does a number of different things. It allows us to have a really interactive calendar on our website. It allows for online room reservation for our, the Laura Novak Memorial Meeting Space, so people can just kind of go to the website and make their reservation. And it also allows us for Wi-Fi tracking that's more closely aligned with the ILMS standards for tracking, which will help in the long run for advocating for our elevator edition and accessibility feature project, which is down the road a bit, because a lot of the funding that's out there depends on how are you providing access to the internet? And if folks who have a harder time getting around or other disabilities can't get to the building to get to the internet, well, there's a problem there. So, so that's some of the subscription in there and the reasoning behind that. It's a pretty neat bit of software.
Other questions from the board?
I have one question and one comment. Congratulations on increasing your hours.
Oh, many thanks. This has been a really interesting position and opportunity that we've had. We have sort of a, it's, in one way, you can look at it as an endowment fundraising campaign. We're still in the very preliminary fundraising stages for that. We have yet to hit the public phase of that campaign, but that allowed us to increase the library's hours. We were offering 10 more hours every week. We're offering, it brought me up to a full-time job, which is great, which, you know, with appropriate compensation and benefits. It also allowed us to hire a full-time youth services librarian, a part-time assistant director, and brought everybody up to reasonable compensation for skilled labor, you know, it's skilled work. So, it's been tremendous. We have sort of a fund with Vermont Community Foundation. The interest coming off of that is earmarked specifically for staff. There's a quote from the former head of the New York Public Library, that the library's most valuable resource goes home every night, which is the staff. So, we couldn't do it without the fabulous team I have with me on this. So, yeah, and the, the public certainly has taken advantage of our new hours, which include morning hours, which people have asked for going back at least 15, 20 years. So, we're, you know, we serve a community of early risers, and they're up and about in the mornings. So, that's been, that's been huge. And the interesting thing to look at also with circulation, it was roughly a 25% increase in hours, and we had a 26% increase in circulation. So, those things go together. People want more opportunities to access what we have and what we can do for them.
And I have another question. So, you just mentioned a staff position is, quote unquote, being graphed, funded by a grant?
Yes, so that is.
Is that why it went down?
Yeah, it, we have bridge, like, so the generous individual who founded this Equity and Sustainability Fund has, has also given very generous bridge grants. So, we were able to put the changes needed for the increase in hours and appropriate compensation in place before we met our fundraising goal to supplement that fund. So, we didn't have to wait on it, which was tremendous and an opportunity we could not refuse.
And my last question is, just a little bit that, a few things that we subscribe to, like Amazon Prime. You know, we realized, we had like three Amazon Prime accounts going. Is there a way for you to monitor the services that are provided through a subscription to see if it's really worth it? Or, I'm assuming, you wouldn't be subscribing if you didn't think it was worth it. But, you know, sometimes things sort of fade off into the distance, but the bill keeps coming, and it still gets being paid.
Yeah, so that's something I'm really excited about, because I notice the gremlins in the budget sometimes, where I'm like, why are we paying this bill? What is this? And one thing I'm really excited about, and I believe Lynn mentioned it, the sort of technology upgrade, the fiber connect system upgrade. This is going to allow us to streamline our voice-over internet phone, which we've had for a year and a half now, and our high-speed internet and a lingering Comcast bill. So, that's like that one subscription, we're like, do we use this? No, I don't think so. So, that's going to be an efficiency that that grant will produce long-term.
Right. But, but can you drill down and see how many people are actually using the subscription?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That ultimately was my question.
Yeah, you know, and it's, for someone who loves stuff like that, it can be a bit, let's go look at how many people are using Libby this month, and, you know, what's going on with Canopy Kids? Yeah. So, every month, I produce kind of a statistical dashboard to look at what's going on. For example, a few years back, we ended our subscription with Mango Languages, which is a language learning subscription, because we had six people using it. And I said, you know, we could try promoting it better, but our plans were to bring in Canopy for video streaming, which contains the Great Courses Language Series. So, you do have access to that kind of material, but just not with another subscription.
Thank you, Jenny.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the audience? Comments from the audience? Okay. Anything else you want to share?
Oh, let's, let's do a little happy thought here. So, we have, we were, thanks to a very generous donation from the Dundas family, we are renovating the youth room, and we are seeking feedback from young people, their parents and caregivers, for how to, how do you imagine the space? So, you can go to our website or go to the library to give your feedback about what you think, what you want, what you like, what you don't, and we hope to have that completed by the end of 2024.
Okay. So, same, same request. We have the library, McCullough Library is asking for an increase from 42,500 to 48,000, which is a 13% increase, $5,500. For the purposes of discussion, do we want to make a motion, or do we want to hold this until we've heard from the Rescue Squad?
I think it's appropriate to hold it based on the increased percentage. Small dollars, but big increase.
Yep, yep. Okay. So, anyone, anyone else interested in making a motion? We're all okay with holding it? All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
And let's move on. Do we want to take a quick, do we want to take a quick break, or people finally approve? Anybody, are we okay? All right, let's move on to the Rescue Squad.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you?
All right, so Bill, we'll turn it over to you to introduce yourselves and to orient us.
Certainly. I'm Bill Camarda, Executive Director of Bennington Rescue Squad. Excuse any additional brain fog over usual. I am recovering from COVID. It's been, it's been almost a whole week, but still recovering.
I'm Brian Howe. I am the Chair of the Bennington Rescue Squad Board.
I'm Greg Nesbitt. I'm on the Board of Directors.
All right. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity today to come and talk to you about what's been going on at the Rescue Squad and our request for annual appropriation. Just as a quick lay of the land, we have closed out our 2023 numbers. We did 5,684 calls last year, which was an increase of 9% overall. A lot of that was both transfers and 911 volume were up significantly. We ended up doing over, it was 4,709 calls, not for emergency service, and 92% of that was in the town of Bennington, so it was 4,330, if I recall correctly there. That is an all-time high. That's been higher than the number of 911 calls we've received in total, with one blip in 2024, I believe it was, where we were at 4,500. So, the rest of the year since then have all been 4,000 or lower on the 911 side. So, this is an exceptional year on the 911 side. Excuse me. In time and travel, you know, it was about just over almost half a year worth of time that our crews spent actually responding to or caring for individuals, and it was over 87,000 miles our units traveled last year, providing care and service to the folks in the town of Bennington and our other towns, or our surrounding areas, or the hospital. In terms of our dollars, this, as you see on the budget that we have in our appropriation request there, for this fiscal year, our forecasted loss is $258,000. That does include costs such as like depreciation, bad debt, and write-offs. So, in terms of our operational income, we're very close. we are very close to what we are, our revenue in terms of our expenses. However, when, in terms of accounting, it is still a lost year because of those, those costs. We don't have final numbers for the fiscal year that just ended, but in that year, we did experience a loss that was almost double that, if not more. We're waiting for our final numbers from our audit firm. Over the last year, we've picked through our budget.
Can you just, what, how much, what is your, what is your estimated loss for last year?
It is somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three times that, 258,000. So we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 to $900,000 loss last year, fiscal year. This year is trending differently, so again, we've reduced that by close to 2/3. And a lot of that now is that non-operational loss. But we continue to pick through our budget. We've slashed anything and everything that we can continue to. We've readjusted all our units' hours so that they're more in line with when 911 calls and transfer requests come in. We received $400,000 in grants so far this fiscal year, which is not accounted for on these documents yet. And I'm trying to think, what else would be a good segue into any Q and A? And in your questions, because I'm sure there's, there's going to be quite a few.
I don't know, any questions that would help sort of lead into this? I mean, it was very nice that you've come fairly recently and given us a very thorough update, so that I think we are more-
Yeah, and I'm more than happy to recap any of that kind of information too, but I think that you got-
Yeah, and you have it in, and you have it in the packet that we received.
Yes. So the packet includes all the recent changes in terms of cost compensation, our partnerships. And, I mean, the, I don't know if the, the amount of inflation and cost increase, which you are all aware of, is reflected as well as it could be in this packet, but it's been about 36% over the last six to seven years. Medicare just announced our fee increase for this current year, calendar year, and they're giving us a generous 2% increase when even the CPI for 2023 is 5.3. They say they base it off of that, but they base it off at mid-year. So that happened to be a time where inflation was low. It's kicked up again here at the end of the year. So we're still in a situation where they're not increasing at the same rate that our costs are increasing. It's less than half of what we actually are incurring.
Great. And you gave us the very sobering comparison with Walmart overnight, Aldi.
Yeah, and we've been, we've included some regional comparisons as well. We know that's always a question. How much are other towns spending in comparison to Bennington? And at least percentage-wise and dollar-wise, the other towns are contributing more to their municipal EMS services, their, excuse me, their nonprofit EMS services on their municipal appropriations than our three towns by double, almost.
And that was on a per-call basis, Bill?
Yeah, so it's on per-call. We can break it down per capita. We've done both in the past. It always, it always comes out to somewhere in the neighborhood of 30% to 100% or more that other towns are contributing towards their EMS services.
And is there, is this a case where, being a larger organization, that that should bring the cost, the cost of service down?
Theoretically, yes, it, it should. And that is part of, part of what that number reflects is that we do operate as a more efficient service. And there probably are efficiencies to be gained. You know, regionalization, just to pop it up, or centralization, people are using different terms these days to make it a little more palatable, is always a consideration. Will those costs necessarily come down? Probably not, even if there was consolidation, because you're talking about a workforce where most people work one to, two to three jobs sometimes. So if they work for a local service, they probably also work for the neighboring local service. So when you take away the barriers and you make it one service, the second job now is overtime, if you still want those hours staffed. So there, there are benefits to be gained in terms of administration, education, quality assurance, and resource allocation, which is probably the most important one. But in terms of efficiency, in terms of financial gain, probably not significant. You'd probably just be talking more about flattening the costs across all the, all the municipalities versus any specific savings, if that is my own personal opinion.
I think that's notable because it's one of those unintended consequences that you discovered when you were looking at regionalization, that big bad word, because your employees are, you know, moonlighting across the line.
So then, right, there's, I think, we had been hoping that a more regional approach would bring down costs because we know it, it can decrease administrative costs, building costs.
Absolutely.
Vehicle costs, that's-
I think it may just be a wash in the end. I don't know if it's going to necessarily be any kind of cost savings. I would hope it doesn't cost additional, but you never know with mergers. They, they sometime, or regionalization, whichever kind of pathway would follow, you, you end up with just about the same kind of costs in the end, it seems like, having gone through one or two previous positions.
So what is, what are your thoughts, or your board's thoughts, on ways to contain costs?
So the first is our fleet modernization, which hopefully, not hopefully, we know the numbers are going to reflect come next fiscal year, has saved us a significant amount of money in terms of our fleet operation. So we now have a combined fleet of the van-style ambulances and the ones that have the box in the back. Most people like the box in the back. In terms of providers, there's more room to work. The van is a little bit more economical, a lot more economical.
What does the box in the back mean?
So the box in the back, so when you look at one ambulance, it looks like, it looks like a normal, like, transit van, just has a really tall roof. And so it's like a work truck, where we've kind of extra-crammed everything into the spaces. It's super efficient. It's also safer because it's, it's crash-tested for the whole vehicle. It meets federal crash-test standards. The box is the one that has the big rectangle on the back, and it has more room to operate. So it's about eight foot wide instead of, you know, about five and a half, six foot, like a normal passenger vehicle. But it's a lot more expensive to operate because it gets lower mileage. It weighs more, so it's less, less fuel-efficient, more wear and tear on vehicle components. Whereas the van ambulances are a little bit more efficient. They just don't have as much room to operate sometimes with critical patients. That's why our investment through grants into the other equipment, like ventilators, CPR devices, et cetera, has been equally as important to make sure that the tools are available to be able to work efficiently in that smaller workspace. So we're looking for, we're looking at several tens of thousands of dollars worth of savings in that area alone. So yes, there was the capital upfront cost. We're going to pay for that for a few years. But these units should have a lifespan of somewhere between five and eight years before needing replacement.
And do you have a, do you also have a cycle that you, you replace X number of trucks?
We have been trying, since I've been here, to get into a regular cycle. This is probably the closest we've been to being able to do that because it is a solid fleet at the moment. So that gives us a little bit of time to plan. That is probably the area where we're going to see the greatest capital expense over time. And we need to get into a replacement plan where instead of buying two or three at a time, we're buying one every year on a regular cycle, probably about five years from now.
And so are you, this is a selfish question. Are you, we don't want you to come in five years and tell us that you need this much money because you need to buy a new truck. Are you, do you have a fund, do you have a reserve fund or some kind of-
We have our Reserve Investment Fund. We borrow, that's where our debt is right now in terms of our vehicle expenses. There's a margin on that investment fund. And we pay interest to the investment firm that manages the entire fund, but part of it is segmented and can't be touched because that money is dedicated to cover that debt.
Okay.
So our plan is to pay down that debt over the next five years in order to then be able to buy another ambulance and continue to use that plan of borrowing against our own money, basically, instead of trying to use other borrowing instruments. The biggest capital expense coming up would probably be, besides, is our cardiac monitors. They're expensive. They require a replacement every X number of years. They're eight years old now, going on nine. They are supposed to be replaced by the time they turn 10. And each one of those is $45,000, and we have eight of them. They've always been replaced in one fell swoop, so we tend to wait 10 to 15 years and try and limp them along. But there are now new other options. So we're looking into things such as operational costing instead. So you can lease the units, and they will replace them on a periodic basis. But it then becomes just an ongoing cost. So then we have to try and absorb, they'll usually, it plans out to be negotiated, but it usually ends up costing you about the same as one, at least one cardiac monitor every year. But at least you can spread it out over 12 months and then have to try and find a way to finance that, to subsidize your operations for a few thousand dollars more a month.
Other questions? So, Ed, I know you're, you are the liaison, which would not normally mean that you need to recuse yourself that you've been involved in the financial pieces. But I, I think it is useful for you. If you have, if you have questions or if there are things that you think that should be covered, let's do that. You just won't be able to be in the formal discussion.
So I know that you, when you spoke to this board last, you mentioned the legislation that is being considered that would require Medicare reimbursement for non-transports. I think this board has heard this point in that our rescue squad does not get paid unless they transport a patient. And, and Bill and his team can tell us the number of calls that are, that result in non-transport, that don't really have any less cost to the organization. So where is that legislation now and what can the public do about it?
And Senate has not moved past the Senate Committee. In the House, it's been bounced along three different committees, but it's not gotten out of any committee. If you go by any of the dot org agencies that rate how likely a bill is to pass or get passed committee-level, most of them are 0 or 1%, unfortunately. All bills altogether are less than 10%. But it's, it's on the lower end of that range, unfortunately. The, the only ways to do that would be to influence outside of our own area. So it's great when you have constituents from the same area delegation that's already presented the bill. But there would really need to be more of a national outreach from constituents to say, "This is important legislation to pass." And there are national EMS organizations pushing that, but overall, it's less than a million EMS personnel, 1/3 of a percent of the population of the US out there. So getting the word out sometimes is difficult. And there's so many different competing needs right now in terms of, of support from healthcare and healthcare payers. So it's very hard to get that message through sometimes.
Got a question.
Absolutely.
What committees, both in the Senate and the House, have you presented?
I haven't presented, so it's Senator Sanders-
This is federal.
Oh, okay.
So nothing-
Welsh, Sanders, and Representative Bayland have rep, have put these forward. If there is an opportunity to testify, we'd be probably one of the agencies asked throughout the state to try and send somebody. And we would definitely let you know if that does come to fruition.
Okay, not so great news.
And that, sorry, that refusal rate is about 20% of 911 calls. It fluctuates from about 19% to as high as 25% in any given month, but our annual average is 20.2%. So about 800 and, 810 calls or so here in the town of Bennington would be refusals every year.
So what I learned when I was working with these guys, Jenny, to your point, is that not only is the rate of reimbursement lower than cost for those that are reimbursed, but there's 20%-ish that are not reimbursed at all.
Yeah. We, we try and keep, it's, it's on our website now. We keep our rates reasonable. So it is a few hundred dollars to load you into the ambulance, and then it's about $20 a mile is what we believe the cost is if it was paid by the insurer or the patient. But then you look at what Medicare, for example, pays. They pay about half of whatever the requested rate is. So they're not, they have not covered the cost of service since the inception of the, the system and reimbursement for ambulance transport. And they've really neglected that piece of care that's provided, but not transported.
So the, I know the police department's call rates are way up as well. So are these, your call rates and their call rates?
They are probably similar. I don't know their, I missed the, I missed the call.
Yeah, I don't remember how many they had.
I missed the CAT TV last weekend. But our rate, our overall was up 9% last year. It had been forecast to go up as high as 11%, but we got a reprieve in the month of November for some reason. It was just shy of 400 calls, where we've been running, you know, 450 to close to 500-plus calls a month for the entire year. So there was a little break in November. But otherwise, it's been back to non-stop.
Other questions for, yes, just slide.
On, let's see, page four of your report, the box at the bottom, appropriation per call for the town of Bennington is $57.12, and the others are substantially higher in the other communities you list. Does this in any way, this number, reflect the number of calls that you get from Bennington that are non-transports?
So probably, so I have not, I took our global refusal number, for example, and applied it to Bennington without a further dive into the data so far.
Okay.
If I was to give you my professional opinion, it would be that that refusal rate is probably higher in the town of Bennington than the other towns listed here. So you get much less frequent calls, but they usually result in transport in these more distant areas like Shafterberry or Woodford. Why? Probably has something to do with a combination of socioeconomics that is well above my education level, to try to explain.
Mm-hmm. Well, that number's really hard to look at compared to, so I-
It is, it is, but it's just, it is trying to quantify that, how much of a contribution versus tackling some of the, "You're not going to be able to fix this number. We're not going to be able to fix this number." But as a community, we can fix some of the contributing factors to this number as well, such as better mental health, better substance use disorder, resources in the community, having things like a hub where the resources are available, housing. All of those kind of factors all, all contribute into this number of why are the calls so much higher in Bennington? And a lot of that, again, you know, just personal opinion and kind of seeing, seeing the larger picture, is that Bennington is a hub. So people are drawn here, and if they need services, they're going to try to find a way to stay here because the services are here. So that increases the number of services, like emergency services, that you're going to need in order to answer those needs until those needs are met in a lasting way. So.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that.
I wish a budget discussion would-
Because if we're looking at basically 200 and some calls between Shafterberry and Woodford and 4,000 in Bennington, I mean, they're figuring out how to divert 911 calls that shouldn't be coming into you, but should be addressed in other ways is, it feels-
Yes.
It feels like that, that is the way to bring the costs down.
And again, so again, you start thinking, we're entering our own strategic planning phase now for our next five-year plan, but you start to think about ways to impact that, and one of those ways is to engage partners at the state level to say, "All right, when the call comes into 911, there should be a triage." And that triage, maybe statewide, is some of those calls get diverted after medical priority dispatch screening to a nurse call line or other practitioner call line, even a paramedic, that can then navigate some resources for them, and maybe agencies that are a little bit more in the position to start doing some of that work, say, "All right, we're going to send out a non-emergency unit, like just an SUV with an EMT or paramedic in it to go and do a wellness check, does this person really need an ambulance, or do they need to get connected to other resources?" But then again, you have to find a way to pay for all of that, and that's the difficult part right now, and without payers like Medicare who want, who don't want to pay for non-transport care, even though that prevents several tens of thousands of dollars of downstream costs in the healthcare system, they don't want to pay a few hundred-dollar EMS visit, which seems counterintuitive, so.
Any other questions from the board? Wait, questions from the public? Yes, Sam, please come over here.
Good morning, Sam Mercino, Bennington, Vermont. One is a clarification, and others are questions. When the Bennington Rescue Squad first started out, it was Bennington Town Rescue Squad, that is no longer, it's Bennington Rescue because they are a regional squad, and the demand is up there. One question is, I've read that Adams, Massachusetts, their rescue squad is on the verge of closing. Does that affect our rescue squad? I know you gave a very in-depth report at a select board meeting about mutual aid, I call it, because of getting, asking for assistance through other rescue squad agencies, it's not only just Cambridge, Ponell does a lot of work, North Shore does a lot of work, Housick Falls does it, and I mean, I'm preaching to the choir here, but for the ones that are listening and in the audience and don't monitor the scanner, they rely a lot of help, and virtually, life now, when you ask to set up a landing zone, our departments are requested to respond with the fire department and the police department, and then all of a sudden you say, "Cancel the landing zone." That's a big cost, and that has happened quite a bit. So, I was wondering, who swallows those costs when you ask for a landing zone, and then all of a sudden they cancel the landing zone at the welcome center or wherever it is, and they ask to proceed to the hospital with ambulance?
Thank you.
All right, so our name is still, our full, we call ourselves Bennington Rescue because it's nice, easy, and short to say. We are the Town of Bennington Rescue Squad Incorporated, but we've always served our surrounding areas, Woodford, Shaftesbury, and the larger area whenever they request help, and we have a resource to send. So, our name hasn't changed, just the way that we refer to ourselves, we usually just refer to ourselves as Bennington Rescue. In terms of Adams ambulance closing, I think that it's an important point to bring up. It doesn't affect us directly, it is, you know, about five towns, two states, different counties away, but it is on our radar, and it's something we share on a regular basis, are things like the Adams ambulance service closing, they're closed, they no longer are in operation, at least, they don't have an operational license from my, what I understand reading the news, just like everybody else, and North Adams was approached by the other, some of the other towns to cover that service. They already do close to 9,000 calls in North Adams ambulance service, so you're adding an additional number of calls onto their organization. Could this affect us eventually? Maybe, but more than likely, they're going to be able to absorb that call volume and take on a lot of that staff, from my perspective here in Bennington. I think, though, it's a warning to us that that can happen anytime, even here in this region, we have a lot of smaller services. Bennington Rescue, even though we're large for Vermont, we're still a smaller service in terms of the global. You talk about hospital service, I came from, we did 75,000 calls a year. That was a lot larger than the system. We are always at risk, and those kind of systems close down every day, too, and that's scary when that happens. And I think having this upfront, forthright conversation over the last eight, nine years in terms of funding our own difficulties, I know some of it may have fallen off a little bit, but what good we're doing, but also what challenges we're facing, is very important for our community and for our elected representatives to understand. We're working very hard to address those issues, and we're trying to do it as much on our own as possible, but we're also a non-mandated essential service. So, you expect an ambulance to show up when you call 911, but that's not a guarantee anywhere, that service is not essential and funded appropriately, as the same as a public safety department for a municipality, for example. So, those are all difficult questions, and we are more than willing partners, I don't want to speak for my board, for sure, but at least from my perspective and the board that we have, I think that we're more than willing to talk about any and all considerations of how to make the service more equitable for the region and still be as efficient as possible to provide that service in a cost-effective way.
Can you, can you just, I don't know if this is a brief conversation or not, but just, how did you arrive at the 17.4% increase?
So, that funding increase is based off, to be honest, we're having trouble thinking of ways to cut enough money to then be able to afford a cost of living increase for our staff for next year. So, that is what a $1 an hour, 5% or less, definitely less, would be to continue to maintain, basically, our current wage structure in the inflation kind of era that we're living in right now. I think we can fund some of it, but I really don't know if we can fund all of it. So, that is where we're at at this moment, is that we're requesting that number based off of that kind of formula, is the simplest way to put it. We're looking to maintain and continue to recruit staff. We're not, we're definitely not top of the range in terms of salary for the region, we don't want to fall down to the bottom because then we're going to start losing staff. So, any cuts that we are, that we're able to get and any additional funding in that can be used for that source, we're trying to use to support our crews' recruitment, retention, health and well-being initiatives, so that we can keep our crew retained and continue to recruit. Sorry.
Any final questions?
I'm looking at page two, where you speak to the investments and the decline in the amount.
Yes.
Are you feeling optimistic that with the market, things may get better?
So, we're, and we're feeling, we're feeling pretty positive about, hopefully, market direction, but also that we have stopped the need to continue, the other part of that sentence there is drawing significant quantities for operational support. Because of that loss yet to be published, like exactly what that amount is, we had to draw down significantly from our investment fund to support operations. That's what it's there for, is for emergencies like that. But now replenishing it is probably going to take as long as it took to build it, and it took back, probably even before Brian's time, to build that investment fund up to the point where it supports operations. Our goal has always been to have a fund which is equivalent of about a year's worth of operation, if we get like a Medicare audit, for example, you're not allowed to bill while they do the audit, which can take three to 12 months to complete. So, you really need to try and think in terms of an emergency, if they come in to audit your records, which they can do anytime they feel like, you need to have a reserve to be able to continue to operate. Now, it's down to, I mean, it's higher than that number on the page now, it's about 1.325, I believe, was what we had on last Wednesday, or this Wednesday, when we had our finance meeting. So, we've had some positive movement on it, but it's not, it's not anywhere near getting back to the three, over $3 million now our operating budget is. So, we're going to slowly but surely try and move back in that direction.
And I have one more question. The annual fund donations have decreased by 18% since 2019. Is there any ideas on how to increase giving?
It's been, it's been something we've been trying to tackle for a while, so we do online now, we do mailers, and this year is performing a little bit better than that, but in general, giving has been down. I think it's hard, hard to see some of the donations when people are seeing that kind of impact on their pocket, too. That's definitely been an impact we've seen these last two years, is we were running at least steady, which, again, is not keeping up with inflation, and then we saw a sharp decrease when we started to see the increase in consumer costs, like groceries. When that starts to happen, people are not going to give as freely or generously as they have in the past. So, we're also open to any ideas or suggestions. We're just trying to, we're trying to be strategic, but we're also trying to maintain operations every day.
Yeah, I mean, I know you don't have a development person on staff.
No.
Doing fundraising, I realize that, but, you know, there may be somebody out there who would be able to help you, you know, just on, as a consultant, on some ideas. Jenny's, when she was presenting, people want to be together, and I'm just thinking, some sort of an event where people are able to be together, and you can tell your story, and, you know, something like that really chugs at people's heartstrings, may turn that number around.
Yes, and as a responsible fiscal agent on our board, that has been discussed before, but it's always, without hiring and paying someone and all the costs that go into that kind of event, you have to make sure that you're going to get at least what you're paying out back.
Right.
And we've had mixed results with those kinds of, usually smaller kind of community events in the past, but a larger event may be a little bit more successful. We would just, we would definitely need to either hire or have some donated time from somebody.
And you solicit sponsors and all of that good stuff, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
So, anyway.
That's how we did our EMS week last year, and be able to have a little celebration was, we were able to solicit some generous sponsors from throughout the community to be able to support that, so.
And also your celebration of 60 years, I mean, yeah, you have, you have been in the, I applaud you for the increased level of awareness, I think, the community has of the work you're doing. You've done a really great job of getting yourself out there in the last few months.
And it's, yeah, and it's just really celebrating the work that this crew does every day. I'm here to trust, I'm here to try and guide the ship and make sure that there's enough funds to be able to continue to operate and preferentially grow the, either level of service, level of care, or what our folks are earning at the end of the day, because they're lifesaving professionals, they really should be making, in my opinion, again, a much more significant wage than an entry-level retail position, for example.
No doubt.
So, I mean, we did bring, so the select board decided to bring you into the budget a couple of years ago because we were very concerned about a non-mandated essential service that was really at the whim of the voters in terms of what they were.
Absolutely.
What you were getting for a contribution from the town every year. Having said that, that also means, yeah, I mean, it was a tremendous jump that first year.
Yes.
Tremendous jump, and the taxpayers were willing to fund that, and, you know, that's, I think that's excellent and shows that the strong support that certainly Bennington Rescue Squad has in this community. So, I think, do we have, unless we have any other questions, are there, is there anyone else, board or public, that has a question? All right, then, I think we probably are at the point where we should look at both the library funding and the rescue squad funding and make a determination, and we probably want to take these separately since Ed don't need to refuse on the rescue squad. So, all right, so we are, right now, we are being asked for a 13% increase for the McCullough Free Library, which is the equivalent of $5,500, and a 17.4% increase, which is essentially $40,000 for the rescue squad, it's $40,000 and changes. So, any, does someone want to make a motion for the purposes of discussion on one of these?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bennington Rescue Squad at the proposed allocation amount and FY '25.
So, you, you're making a motion to fund them at 17.4%?
Yes.
I know, you're going to have to take off your mask, I think.
I'm making a motion to approve the Bennington Rescue Squad, proposed allocation of FY '25.
Of?
The 40, 40%, $40,000 increase.
So, to increase to 200,066,330, yes, that's their proposal. All right, do I have a second on that? All right, any discussion?
I think the sobering thought for me is that the increase of just 3% is very noteworthy.
You're going to have to speak in the microphone, we can't hear you.
I think it's very noteworthy that the 3% increase of reimbursement rate is very sobering to me.
I have a concern with this level of increase, I think there are a lot of, I, you know, I wish, I wish we could give you the moon, you do excellent work, I have absolutely, and I do think that you have done an excellent job looking at, it's sobering to hear that consolidation or regionalization, or whatever word you want to use, is not going to significantly bring down costs. What's going to bring down costs is reducing the call volume, and so that you are really providing essential services rather than other services that other organizations could be providing. And that, that's not going to be, that's not going to be a quick fix, but it does feel like we have some mechanisms within the town, the community at this point, to address that more thoroughly. I am, I just, I, I just do not, I do not think we can, I personally can't fund you at that, at that level. And I am not quite sure what level I think we could fund you at, but I am, you know, we're looking at a, we're looking at $1 million for allocation to agencies at this point, a little over $1 million, and I just, it just feels like we need to, we need to be paying attention to anything we can do. So, I, I think, you know, and I recognize that we are, we are the, we are the recipient of the vast majority of your services, virtually all of your services. So, I, you know, I don't know, I don't think I could go, personally, it feels to me like we could do, you know, $20,000 increase, I just, I just don't see, I just don't see an increase this high.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, is what you're saying that with the ideas that the squad has to reduce the call volume? call volume or respond to calls in a different way, their expenses will decrease?
Well, theoretically.
Theoretically. I'm saying theoretically.
You wouldn't be having the non-transport calls. So, I mean, so the, the hope is that you avert, you avert in the moment the, the calls that don't result in transport, and then in the long term, you're addressing mental health issues or health needs ahead of time, so there's more preventive work so that we don't get to a crisis, because we're calling you in a crisis in general. Yes?
Is this the open discussion part?
Yeah, please.
Yes. So yes, in some ways, and no in others. So, when I say that we got to 20% last year, that's because of a really solid effort on our crew to engage patients and have a more meaningful conversation. So our transport number actually went up last year. It had been as high as 29% refusal rate in previous years. But by focusing on saying, all right, are we having a meaningful conversation before we just let somebody refuse, which they usually are, but sometimes it's taking that few extra moments to be like, do you really want to stay home? And you seem to be in crisis. And there are limited crisis response, I'm not trying to say just mental health crisis, but resources for non, non-business hours kind of care in the town of Bennington. So, they've worked very hard to keep that transport rate pretty steady over this last year. I think the, we're working on those issues in terms of mental health and social services, but we're talking about like a five, 10-year plan before we really see any true impact from, from those. Those partnerships are great, but they have to be sustained, and this is still a very young effort. I haven't even been here a year myself yet in this, in this role. So, almost, but not quite. And as we've seen through things like Project Alliance, sometimes things fall off just because somebody goes, somebody leaves a job. And, and we have to make sure that those kinds of drop-offs don't happen in the future. Because what's good planned today and working really well disappears sometimes with one person, and that's a problem. And in setting up those systems, that's going to take a lot of time to make sure that system, those kinds of systems are sustained. In terms of cost going down, that really depends on kind of what level of service then we start to talk about. Does the town of, towns of Bennington, Shasbury, and Woodford expect? So right now, there's no, there's no solid, I believe there's a very old document, but there's no solid agreement. This is Bennington Rescue must provide X number of ambulances to provide 911 service. So, does, does that mean we staff three ambulances at peak during the day? Or do we say, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to be good gambling with one? Then cost might go down. But what happens when the second call comes in? Then we're going back to relying on that system of mutual aid, and we're making it a neighbor's problem to answer the 911 call. And what does that look like? We staff based on what we forecast our demand is. So we look at it every few months, and we say, all right, when are calls happening? And we determine that most days, if not all days, we require three ambulances at peak. Going down from that would really require a substantial decrease in call volume. So we're talking thousands of calls decrease, probably closer to answering 3,000, 4,000 calls a year than closer to six, before we would reduce even one ambulance, probably.
And so do you see the, the additions that the Bennington Police Department has added in terms of resource officer, resource?
Crisis.
And, and the crisis, and the crisis worker?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you see that as, I think the victim's advocate is sort of a different piece, but those three feel like they are in some ways addressing that same population of people in immediate need. Is that going to be?
Yes. So, we're going to, we're going to start diving into that complex discussion there, but, so that's going to help with the acute mental health crisis call. Those are roundabout, if you looked at our Facebook numbers that we put out every month, somewhere between 20 and 40 calls, so, you know, about, so that's 10, 10%. At a very busy month, that 10%. So, that, that may help on that, but that's not going to help on the call where somebody is calling because of their asthma, diabetes, or other mental problem, medical problem because their medical mental health problem isn't, they aren't addressing. So it's a very complex issue. But yes, in terms of the straight call volume for mental health challenges that cause a crisis, we could see a reduction in that number. But it's still a team approach most times, where it does require now more resources and more time, especially with things like force, use of force policy. So we're going to spend more time trying to get that individual into the system in the most appropriate way that is not protective custody unless a mental health warrant is indicated. So, I wish there were easy solutions here to say, yes, that is going to cause a huge decrease in our call volume. It probably will, but it's too early to tell right now.
And it's over time. I mean, yeah. It is a work in progress.
Yeah, yes.
Other thoughts?
What's your fiscal year?
Our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30.
They switched it to match ours.
Yeah. Yep. In 2019.
Because you guys were really complicated.
We were calendar, and it's still easier when we're talking to the public about call volume and stuff to use, and even elect officials calendar year than trying to say, well, last fiscal year. Then you're like, what's your fiscal year? Because it still could be different. But in terms of finances and our reporting, it makes it easier to understand. We operate on the same fiscal years to town.
Which we appreciate. Other thoughts?
If there's no more Select Board thoughts, I'll just channel my inner Stuart. Just, I'd just point out for folks that our budget's up combined 5.26%. Our general fund up 6.08%. Our PD, 7%. So, I, I don't question the need for this, but I think we have to temper that request with what we're asking the taxpayers to already take on for the town's core budget.
Yep. I agree. Other thoughts on this? Well, if we don't have other thoughts, we're going to need to vote. So, are we ready to do that? Anyone in the public wants to speak? All right, I'll call the question. So, motion has been made to increase the Bennington Rescue Squad budget for next year to $266,330. An increase of 17.4%. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Please say nay.
No.
Any abstentions? One abstention. All right. All right, so do we have another motion?
Make a motion to table this and have these rescue squads move it out of there. Their budget.
So Jim, we don't really have time to do that. We need to make a decision today so we can meet the requirements for the warning. So I think we do have to make a decision today.
All right. How about if we go with what the town's increased budget is, what was the general fund, 5%?
The general highway and fire fund combined show an increase of 5.26%.
I offer an increase of 5.26% to the rescue squad.
Want to go, you know what that is?
I can, I can do that. Give me a minute. So I'll double-check this before final, but it'd be $238,803 and some change.
It'd be what?
What would the increase be?
That would be, that's the 5.26% increase.
What's the total of the dollars?
So the, 238,000. I want to double-check that number, though.
And so, well, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I, I totally understand that they, that they're asking for an increase, I think. Yeah, it just needs to be something that we can, that we can, as a board. So, and so that total then is 238, what?
That's at a 5.26, and that's about, it's 11,933 dollar increase.
Okay. So, so then the motion you're making is a 5.26% increase, which would translate into 2038,803. Yes?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right.
For discussion.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion?
I still really would have liked that to be approved for the increase of 40,000. This is an essential service for our town, and the other towns contribute much more than we do when we're at the highest call volume. So with that said, I will vote to approve it, but I'm very disappointed that we didn't approve that for the 40,000, because this is essential service to our town.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts? Size do not count!
Jeanie, that's coming up lower than the number that you threw out earlier in the discussion. I just want to bring that point.
Yep, yep, it is.
I'm just really struggling. I mean, this is life and death here. It's not, it's, it's not nothing.
Well, as are the police department, bar department, and, yeah, yeah.
So.
That's why I'd like, I'd like the board to reconsider. I know I can't vote, but I'd like the board to reconsider some.
I think you're on thin ice. Yeah.
I'll stop.
Yeah.
I guess I would like the board to reconsider.
Yeah, I, I actually.
When Jeanie says that, I would like the board to reconsider that, from what I just said.
So let's vote. All those in favor of a 5.26% increase, which translates 238,803 dollar increase to the, to the rescue squad budget? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
One.
All right. Okay, well, all right. Do we have a third motion?
Yes, I guess we do, although I would like to make a motion to approve, go back and re-approve the budget for the recommended amount of 40,000, approve, the increase of approved 40,000.
Okay. I mean, the 40,000 was rough.
Yes.
So a 17.4% increase?
To reconsider that, yes.
To 226,800, I'm sorry, 266,330. All right, do we have a second for that?
I'll second, but this is a discussion.
All right, discussion.
What, what is the dollar amount that you have in your endowment?
It's 1.3 million dollars.
And you can't whittle out of there 40,000 to cover this increase?
So, kind of what we were discussing before is that, that fund has been depleted greatly. We're supposed, as an organization, our unstrup policy is to try and keep that a year's worth of operating expense, so that in case we have any audits, we have the ability to maintain service. If we don't have that fund and we keep spending it, there, there is going to be, there is the likelihood of an audit then causing an emergency crisis for the town of Bennington, where you're going to be on the hook for millions. As a municipal department, we would probably be about 50% more cost than we are right now, when you think about a labor workforce and municipal benefits and everything. That's not, that's not something we want to come back to you with as an emergency crisis. So, both internally, and, and I'm not going to speak to the board here, but I, I as the executive director would highly advise against dipping into that investment fund to continue to pay for operations when we're less than a third of a year operating balance in that investment fund right now. Let Brian speak to that.
Yeah. I'm going to say one thing, and then I'm going to apologize.
Go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Oh, Brian Howe, the Chair of the Board. I'm also dispatching at the police department, so the midnight shift dispatcher is staying over for me. So, after I speak, my, it's a really busy day down there. To ask any nonprofit to reduce an endowment or a trust fund and to treat it like, you know, kind of a bank account is kind of the bane of any board or director. That, those reserve funds are meant there to kind of maintain fiscal responsibility and for the future of the Bennington Rescue Squad. Those are future funds. Those are funds for way after I'm gone, that I hope the board of directors has an opportunity to look at and to be able to use for capital projects, which we, what, at one point in time, we were able to use that fund, that trust fund, for capital projects. But because of the crisis, this kind of perfect storm, we've had to whittle away at that. We can't continue to whittle away. It will be gone. And anybody who's part of a nonprofit organization who knows what happens when you don't have those funds available, it's, it's a disaster. And it could be the end of the Bennington Rescue Squad.
That is exactly what happened to Adam's ambulance, is they ran out of funds and they had no reserve left, because they used all of their reserve to pay for operating expenses. So it created a fiscal crisis where they reproached the town for over half a million dollars mid-fiscal year, and it just couldn't be done.
I also do appreciate you needing to have funds in the bank in case of an audit when you can't be billing, which is a very sobering thought.
It is.
Also, those funds create income.
Well, and we had at one point, we had enough in those, and, and I have to go back. I mean, my first anniversary for the Bennington Rescue Squad was its 20th. And I remember when I joined, when I joined, I remember going out door-to-door in one of the ambulances collecting coin cards, collecting little quarter cards. We had a longtime treasurer, Al Pacino, who did an incredible job of building up that money. It was a lot of hard work. And I just would like to see in the future, the ability of that money to do what was intended to do.
All right, other questions? Any other discussion before we vote on a 17.4% increase, which takes it back up to the original proposed amount? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. No. No abstentions.
Any abstentions?
All abstentions. I'll do the ice.
Just sit on your hands, Ed. Just sit on your hands.
I'm sorry, I have to go, but I do.
Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, Jeanie, just maybe for discussion purposes, just so folks can, if we were to fund them at a fund them at a little over a 10% increase, that would be about $250,000. That may be a compromise number. It is significantly higher than what we funded on any of our departments, the municipal departments, but they have obviously made a good case in why they-
Or could we, I mean, I, you know, the, if we funded at, yeah, at eight or eight and a half.
Yeah, it's eight point, I did the math.
Oh, me?
And I'm really bad at math, but I actually could do this. Half is 8.7%. And that's what was going to be my, that is what my motion was going to be.
We'll make it, and then we can have discussion.
I move that we fund the rescue squad at an increase of 8.7%. I don't have the dollar figure, however.
We can do that.
So it's right smack in the middle.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All right, discussion?
Since the motion has passed, or has failed twice.
It's speaking to the-
Since that motion has passed, has failed twice. Oh, and now I'm going to compromise on that.
You would be, okay.
Yes. I'm not thrilled with it, obviously, but-
Can we get the dollar amount?
Yes, Dan's doing the math.
And I'll double check it, but it's $246,607.69, so let's call it 608.
Can we make it 60?
Two four, $246,608.
And that's an increase of how much?
8.7%.
No, 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 the dollar amount.
To a-
Just shy of 20,000.
Yeah, roughly 20.
Yeah, $19,737.69.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any other questions, comments from the board?
I really want to give you a million dollars, but I can't.
We appreciate the difficulty. We're all Bennington taxpayers as well, most of our staff, so we understand the impacts that this has. But again, we are, we are, we are this essential service that doesn't fall really into the bucket of public safety and true municipal funding, and we're trying to fight as a nonprofit to provide this essential service. So we appreciate the board's deliberation and consideration here.
And I, you know, I do think, I mean, we've said this in past years, and I think you have followed through admirably this year, that this is, this is a town problem as well as a rescue squad problem, and while you are an independent nonprofit, you are getting significant funds from the town-
Correct, correct.
And we do depend on your services, and this is a, this is a shared need to figure out how to at least lower the, you know, decrease the annual increases, you know, so whatever we can do to, to make this a more efficient organization.
And our, and our-
We're there.
Again, I don't want to speak for my board, but at least my perspective is that I would, I would prefer, we're still trying to catch up from no increases in funding until last year, but that it's more in the lines of cost of inflation and, and what you would normally expect as a line item versus continued second year major increase. We appreciate that that is a difficult decision for the board and town administration to have to palette, and that is not our goal, is to do that. But again, we need to have some time of reasonable compromise where the town is, is helping, and we're trying to do the effort on our side to engage community board. And I think there are some other, we'll probably present it through our liaison or directly to the board, there probably are some non-monetary ways that you can help in terms of ordinance or permitting for like events or things where EMS service is kind of needed, but there's no mandate for anybody to pay for it. So there are other opportunities out there to assist our efforts.
Okay, and that will be future discussions, and Ed will be back in the mix, so.
I feel the ice shoring up under me right now as we talk about this.
But we do, we do appreciate this.
All right, so we have any other discussion from the board or any comments, questions from the public? All right, so then we have a motion on the table to, for an 8.7% increase to the rescue squad, which would be $246,608. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
All right, thank you. That was tough, and we appreciate, we appreciate all of your patience and your very good work.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, you'll come in to a slower meeting and give us our opinions.
Absolutely. I've had, I've had a brief discussion with Jeanie in the past, but at whatever frequency the board desires, I'm more than happy to come back with myself or board members to have a discussion on update of Bennington Rescue Squad operations and our finances.
Excellent, thank you.
Or written report if desired.
And let's talk more about municipal support that's not necessarily money driven, to your point.
Absolutely.
Well, it may be money driven, but on our, on our side, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, great. So now we're going to go back?
Wait, one second. I'd just like to make a suggestion.
Absolutely.
When I was a kid, the rescue squad started, I think it was the year that I was born, 1961, and it was all volunteer. And those volunteer drivers and EMT people and their families went door to door. And I just want to recommend or suggest that you look back in the history of how, Sam, I'm talking.
Yeah, sorry.
Look, look back at those things that worked in the history of the rescue squad.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move back to the John G. McCullough Free Library, which is looking for a 13% increase, which is $5,500 and would be a total of $48,000 in the budget. Do I have a motion that we can use for the purposes of discussion?
I'm going to increase the John McCullough Free Library by $1,500.
Do I have a second?
We need a second for the purposes of discussion, so I'll make that second.
All right, thank you very much. All right, discussion, board, any thoughts?
I think we ought to do what we did with the rescue squad, Solomon like, split the baby.
All right, so that would be a six and a half percent increase? Which, how much is it? We can do this. $2,500 plus 40,000 is 50. No, it can't be that much.
Oh, it's a dollar.
It was only five, it was only $5,500.
Oh, you said 6%? Six and a half percent? Let's try it again.
Yeah, unless the math that we originally got is not correct. If we increased by, we'd be increasing by, we can do this, good lord.
Oh.
Twenty-five. So, so it's $2,750 dollar increase, right?
Is that under 4250?
That's, and that's added to 4250.
Which, yeah, it's $45,250.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought you meant increase, okay. $45,000, what?
250 if you add 75.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's seven and a half percent over there.
It's six and a half.
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, so six and a half percent would be $2,750 increase, which would make the appropriation $45,250. Any discussion on that?
Yes, I'm of mixed feelings for that, as we didn't do that for the Bennington Free.
So the Bennington Free Library asked for a cost of living increase.
Yeah, they were only three and a half percent.
Yeah.
And the ask was a much higher monetary amount. So I'm of mixed feelings for that.
It's only three and a half percent.
Yeah.
To a low amount.
Other, so duly noted. Other, other thoughts?
I think this is very fair at $2,750.
At 45,000?
So we're increasing by $2,750 year over year.
Yeah. Any other discussion from the board?
I guess I just wanted to note that they haven't increased their ask in quite some time, and that was mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of struggling with the same thing. Our history has been level, and it's just, I'm, the increase in hours and the increase in circulation and just the increase in everything, to me, proves that I believe they're deserving of their ask this year.
So I do believe that they, didn't they ask for an increase, they didn't ask for an increase last year, but they did the year before.
And I think we denied it, didn't we?
Well, if this chart is correct, they've been getting 42.5 for the last three consecutive years.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just, I think this is a really, I think it's a really tough year, and we're all struggling. I'm just-
There's a projected-
I mean, because we have, I mean, we still, I think outstanding, we still have a $3,000 ask to put that money back in the, in the police department training budget, which I think we were last week in favor of doing, so let's just keep in the back of our head, we do have that $3,000 coming in as well.
That, that's true, but to me, they are, it is in my head, but they're also separate. Because one really has nothing to do with the other. It's just that it's more money. I get that, but to, to punish one because of another doesn't seem fair.
Oh, yeah, I don't see it as punishment. I'm just, I'm just thinking about-
And that's a poor choice of words, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, no, I get it, yeah. So, yeah, I think we're all struggling. I mean, you know, we'd like, we would like everyone to have money, enough money so that they're comfortable, but we also, there's also going to be a pretty unsettling tax increase issue.
I'd like to point out that I keep in the back of my mind and the forth of my mind that the education budget is projected to rise 18%. And that is unsustainable for the state of Vermont and for the people of Bennington.
We don't have any control over that.
And we control that at the ballot box. I mean, we, we don't have any, you know, we, there's nothing we can do about that, so.
Not our problem.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Is this true? For a six and a half percent increase, which would be $2,750, to a total of $45,250 allocated to the John G. McCullough Free Library.
I don't think if we voted down to 13%.
Right, that was-
Oh, did we make that motion?
That motion was made, and there was no action taken on it yet, correct.
Oh, wait, did we?
There was no action on it.
Oh, I-
We do have a motion.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. And it got seconded, you seconded it for discussion.
For discussion.
Okay, yeah, okay. Not enough coffee. All right. Those in favor of a 13% increase, which would provide an allocation of $48,000 to the John G. McCullough Free Library, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay.
No.
Nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so the motion does not pass.
I made a motion that we allocate a 10% increase to the McCullough Free Library. Again, don't have my calculator with me.
All right, we'll do, so 10% would be?
I'll second that motion for the purpose of discussion.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes, Sarah.
That was me, yes.
Sorry, got it. All right, so 10% is what, what amount?
The total is $46,750.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Say that again.
The total is $46,750, but I'll, I'll give you the cat difference.
And it must be up $4,250.
It's what?
It's up $4,250 year over year.
Okay.
That's a 10%.
All right, so the 10% motion was made and seconded, is true? All right, any more discussion about 10%?
Yes, I, I think this has not been increased in the past three years at least.
Speaking to the mic.
Yeah, yes. So this has not been increased in the past three years, so if this is increased this year at approximately 3% each year, this should bring them up maybe to almost where they, they might want to be, maybe, not quite, but possibly.
Any other thoughts? I'm still concerned. I, I, it has nothing to do with the value of any of these organizations. They're all, I, we're in the really crazy position of, of critical services that we are not supporting at the level we would like to. And I think that's true for the town, too. I mean, you know, we've been requested dogs for the police department and two additional labors for the public works department, and we are not acting on those. So I am still concerned about this.
And I think to Sarah's point about it not having asked for no increase in prior years, I think all I can deal with is this year and what it looks like to taxpayers this year.
Yes.
So I have concerns as well, Jeanie.
All right, any other comments, questions from the board? Any from the public? Yes, Jenny, please come up.
Would you like me here or there?
Oh, you can come here, yeah.
We're here, okay.
So, maybe I can help persuade you here for the full 13%. One is, and this has been shown time and again, when people feel concerned about their personal finances, they head to the library. Just as Jean pointed out earlier, looking for those inefficiencies in an organization's budget, people look at inefficiencies in their personal budget, and they head to the library. So if you're looking at the difference between, of $2,000, think about how much a new book costs. And I guarantee you, we're going to have more than 100 people stop by this year, or 100 additional people this year, who will borrow at least one item. The return on community investment is there. And always, when people feel the pinch personally, they head to the library. That's just, time and again, you'll see it when the 2008 recession happened, and organizations like this, like this library are put in a weird position where we are compelled to do more with less. And that will be the position we'll be in without that funding request. So, thank you.
All right, so is it the case that the motion on the floor is 10%?
Uh-huh, yes.
Are we still in the discussion phase?
We are still in discussion.
Jenny, I apologize. I probably should have asked you to stay up for one second, because this, this question is for you. allocations that you're getting from the village of North Bennington and Shaftesbury- Bennington and Shaftesbury, this is my first budget season. Do you present to those two municipalities as well?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I definitely show up. So, one thing is, the Village of North Bennington, I believe they're changing their process, but I presented in December to the board and the public at a village trustees meeting. And Shaftesbury did change their procedure this year. Any increase would have been a petitioned item, so we would have needed to rally and solicit petitions in very short order. And we were not up to that with not a lot of notice. But as Lynn mentioned earlier, they are changing their procedure yet again in the year ahead, and it'll be a similar deliberation to the select board, with the select board, in 2024, I guess it would be the 2026, oh, gosh.
FY 2026.
This coming December, it will change to that in Shaftesbury. So, the other bit I'd like to point out is that North Bennington does benefit substantially from having a library in the neighborhood, but they pay both North Bennington and Bennington, you know, taxes, basically, to support the library.
And the reverse.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's a general tax issue. Okay. Any other questions of Jenny while we have her here?
Not from me. Thank you, Jenny, for making me, helping me understand that.
Yeah, anytime.
Can you remind us of the motion that's on the table?
The motion on the table is a 10 percent increase to the McCullough Library, which is $4,250, or a total of allocation of $46,750.
Thank you.
Any final discussion?
I just want to make sure, anyone who's watching this, that Bennington residents have access to, full access, to the Bennington, to the library in North Bennington as well. There's a lot of people that don't realize that.
Oh, yes. Please come see us. We have a lot to offer. It's a little library that can. So, yeah, Bennington residents, please come see us.
Including a tool library.
Yeah, yeah. So, that was, you know, that's one of those things. We're still, we have all the tools. We had to do fundraising to get the containers to put the tools in, you know. So, you know, we used ARPA funding to establish our tool library, but we're just now getting the containers to get them, so we can actually lend them. It's hard to put a barcode on a pan that's going to go in the oven. So, it'll be on the container. But, yeah, yeah, please, Bennington residents, come see us.
Okay. Seeing and hearing no further questions, all those in favor of the motion on the table, which is a 10 percent increase to $46,750 for the John McCullough Library, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we weren't able to give you what you requested, but we're trying. All right. Other things? Do we need to take a break, guys? Yes, okay. 10-minute break. Great. So, we come back at 25 after 10. Is that right? Okay, can I call us back, please? All right, so we have, we have just a few things left. First, I think we want to look at the funding allocations and formally vote on the organizations and agencies that are within the budget. So, that would include BRCRC at $33,380, Bennington Free Library, what is the final amount that we did for that, Dan?
So, we voted on that, yeah, the 530.
Okay. The McCullough Library, which we voted on, North Bennington Recreation at $6,000, and Perrin Recreation at $2,700.
All three of those are level funded, BRCRC, North Bennington Recreation, and Perrin Recreation.
So, those are all, no increase?
No increase.
So, could I have a motion to vote on, should we do all of them?
Yeah, you can do all three of those. BRCRC, North Bennington Recreation, and Perrin Recreation.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on those?
Noting these are all level funded?
They're all level funded.
Okay.
Then, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Super. For the rest of the funding allocations, which will be organizations that will be on the ballot for the voters to vote on directly, there are a couple organizations that are agencies that need to provide additional information. So, what I would ask is that we approve the amounts, which are all level funded, that are on here pending arrival of the additional information for organizations that are needing to do that. They don't know, they didn't know that they needed to provide additional information. We had not informed them.
So moved.
So, that's why it's happening this way. So, moved. Is there a second?
Could I just ask for clarification? So, we would need this information by no later than Friday at noon.
Friday noon, yeah. So, I will contact those organizations and let them know that the information has to be provided by Friday at noon, or they're not on the ballot. Okay? Okay. Did we get a second on that?
I can make the second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Please get your information in.
Can you say that again?
Yes, please get your information in.
She's just said to the organizations, get your information in, please.
Oh, yes, thank you, yes.
And next time, please get it in on time.
Okay, it's a different issue. Okay. Any comments from the public? All right. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Say it one more time? Oh, Asher, sorry. Cassius is in front of you. Come on up.
I'm sorry, regarding the general budget.
No, this is on funding allocation for the agencies. And then we'll move on to the general, any other?
Okay, no, okay.
Okay, perfect, okay. So, all those in favor of approving the funding allocations that are going to be on the ballot with the caveat that we've provided, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, excellent. All right. So, then, let's move to any outstanding questions on the budget in general. I think the one that was most, that we were asked by the Police Department, and I understand the town manager supports, is adding back in $3,500 for training for the Police Department. And that's mainly leadership training and training for promotion within the department. Any thoughts, any motions?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
That we add the $3,500 back.
Okay.
Into the budget for training.
All right, thank you. Anyone want to second that?
A second.
Thank you. Great. Discussion from the board? I think it's, yeah, I mean, it feels to me like it is important on a number of fronts, and we do want to create that leadership pipeline within the department, and we do want the department to be able to avail themselves of any trainings, of trainings that they see will benefit the communities. Any other thoughts?
I think we have to keep in mind that this is our emergency management organization that we're talking about, so funding their development is critical.
Any comments, concerns, questions from the public? Yes, please come up, state your legal name, town of residence.
Hi, name's Ripper. I was looking at the 2020...
Jack!
Well, it goes against public...
State your legal name.
It's breaking the vision statement of making...
Jack, please state your legal name.
I'm just trying to talk about the budget. Can we just move past?
I'm sorry. For the, the reason that you are required to do that, besides it is our protocol, is that in the, in order to have transparency, when this board speaks, we have discussion in public, we make sure that people know our personal thoughts, we share our, you know, we do discussion in public, which is not always fun, because we're thinking through things on camera. When the public comes up, people need to know who is speaking and where, and what community they're coming from. And that is, that is to maintain the level of transparency that we need in government. So, I'm going to ask you, I am assuming, I assume you are a voter, just because you're an involved human being, and in order to vote, you have to have a legal name. So, please state your legal name.
It goes against public meeting law and Public Accommodation Act?
No.
By discriminating against someone's personal belief?
No, I'm sorry. So, you may not speak unless you can follow the procedure.
So, you're sentencing, let me see if I understand you right. You're asking me to go against my personal beliefs to accommodate to your role?
It has nothing to do with your personal belief. It has to do with stating your name.
Enough. Officer, would you escort him out of your...
Three months ago, we had 40,000 patients lose their information, stolen.
Jack, I'm not going to get into a discussion with you. There is a process...
I'd rather just talk about the budget. So, if we could just get past this, that would be nice.
No, you can't, Jack.
I'm just trying to follow the process.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So, you're saying, I just want to make sure that we're on the record and clear, that I am being told, because of my personal beliefs for privacy, I can't talk?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
That is what you're saying.
I'm saying that the process...
My belief is in privacy. We had 40,000 patients lose their information at our local hospital, and you're telling me to put my name out on the internet, where anybody could look up any account, send that to my family members, do scam reports, which happened about six months ago. I value privacy as one of my beliefs. It would be a little different.
So, Jack, you're on air.
Yes.
And you're on YouTube forever.
Yeah, I understand that. But you're never going to find someone in any legal document with the name Ripper.
No.
That's what I'm saying. I just want to get past the whole name thing and just get right to the budget.
Jack, I'm going to say this one time. We did check with our legal counsel. We can set reasonable rules. We also checked with...
But you have to make reasonable accommodations to people's disabilities, people's beliefs, people's gender identities.
Jack, you're out of order. Please sit down. You're out of order. Please sit down.
So, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Please sit down. Jack.
You're telling me I can't talk because of my beliefs, correct?
Jack, you are out of order. Please sit down.
I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page, that.
We're not on the same page, Jack. Please sit down.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. So, where were we?
We were asking for public comment.
On increasing the training budget.
Correct.
By $3,500. Thank you. Any other comments? Nope. All right. So, I'll call a question. All those in favor of increasing the Police Department's training budget by $3,500, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. All right. And then, remaining budget questions. Is there anything else on the budget that either the board or the public would like to bring up? Asher, yes, please. We need to set these chairs so that they're not like...
It's quite fine. My name is Asher Edelson, living in Bennington. I would just like to reiterate my support for sidewalk expansion and maintenance, being that it is an important issue that many members of this town, many of your constituents, find to be extremely important, not only for the walkability of the town, but for general accessibility. People with disabilities oftentimes rely...
Can you close it, Mark, please? Sorry.
It's quiet around, I'll wait. Thank you. Appreciate you, Jeanne. People with disabilities, not necessarily my disability Tourette's, but people with, you know, physical disabilities, but I find it difficult to walk on sidewalks that are not being, that are not maintained to the extent that they might otherwise be. You know, that presents a big issue. So, I just, I really appreciate what the select board does for local transit. So, I would just ask for that to be a bigger issue moving forward, whether it is in this budget or future budgets for sidewalk allocation to be on your minds, and accessibility for people with disabilities to be ever present on all of your minds for any project or anything. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Asher, did you have a specific proposal on the sidewalk budget for next year?
I'm embarrassed to say that I do not. I would just ask that maintenance, especially on Main Street, be looked at. As far as sidewalk expansion goes, going down Route 7, South Street might be a good place to look at, as well as, I believe it's North Side, heading from the Home Depot up toward North Bennington. I don't know if those have been considered, although they might be considerations for the future.
Okay, all right.
For expansion.
All right. So, your level, so your comments are more connected to the schedule of when we do particular sidewalks. Is that, am I understanding that? I'm just, I'm just thinking that would be, I would encourage you to sit down and look at the sidewalk schedule and how those decisions are being made, which, you know, I know you were here for that conversation. But you're not suggesting that we adjust the budget in any way at this time?
Not per se. I'm just asking for, reiterating my support for sidewalks being a crucial part of the budget and for accessibility to be ever present on your minds when dealing with any issue budgetary or otherwise.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate you, Jeanne. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Asher. All right. So, all right. So, anything, nothing else on, do we have any other, any other issues that came up before? I didn't see anything tracked that people were asking for, that we didn't sort of address in one way or other. All right. So, Dan, what do we need to, what do we need to do for you for this? Do you need a vote that says that we are approving the...
Typically, so yes, but typically, we'll do that after you guys meet an executive session and set the salaries.
Good point.
And then, you'll vote on those salaries.
Okay.
And then, you'll tentatively vote to approve the budget, as you've changed it today, for us to prepare the warning. And that would be, then you would vote at the next meeting to warn that budget.
Okay.
So, that's why we need all the information today, so we can prepare the warning for your next meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right. So, with that, then it sounds like we made a motion to go into executive session. We will be coming out with decisions for the purposes of personnel and setting salaries.
Right.
Do we have a motion? That's a move. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. And we are now ready to finalize the budget. We have motions that Jim would like to make.
Yes. I make a motion that we increase the salaries of the town manager, the town clerk, and the treasurer of 3.2 percent, which is the cost of living for all of us. And I'd also like to make a note that the select board is... like to make a note that the Select Board has never gotten a pay increase for over 10 years, never mind the cost of living. At any rate, with the 3.2 percent increase for the Town Manager, it'll bring his salary to $128,473.68, can you buy a cup, cup of coffee for that? Anyway, for the Town Clerk, we increase it to $100,459, and for the Treasurer, we increase it to $17,791.68. Did I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, great.
Okay.
It passes. All right, and so now we should finalize the budget, what do you need from us?
Oh, I guess we could just approve the FY '24 budget as amended by today's actions, to be placed on a warning to be reviewed on January 22nd.
Great, all right, do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Is there any other business that we need to do today before we adjourn? No? All right, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, thank you very much.